Good evening everyone. We are calling the October tenth meeting of the Antiora School District Board of Education meeting to order. We have a tobacco policy in place, there is no smoking within one hundred feet of any school building. Please stand for the pledge. District Clerk, can you please call roll?
Trustee Jerome.
Here.
Trustee Mitchell Morrell.
Here.
Trustee Goodrich.
Here.
Trustee Hemingway Lynch.
Here.
Trustee Ramondo.
Here.
Trustee Story.
Here.
Trustee Bishop.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. May I have a motion to enter into executive session to meet with our attorney to discuss OTA negotiations? Trustee Story first, trustee Ramondo second. All in favor? That's unanimous. We should be back in one hour.
Item 2.02, may I have a motion to exit executive session? Trustee Ramondo, second, trustee story. Any questions or comments? All in favor? That's unanimous. Okay, we have a welcome tonight from Principal Fallow.
Let's see, is it okay? It's working. I think we're good. So, welcome back to Phoenisha. It's been an exciting school year so far. It's hard to believe that we're already into the month of November solidly. What's that?
October.
What did I just say? I said November. There we go. It's either the years getting ahead of me quicker than I even imagined. Wow. So, just a couple of highlights for the beginning of school. Our first day of school was wonderful, thanks to our PTA. We had fabulous decorations and exciting things coming in. We welcomed our kindergarteners for the first time, and parents came to visit. It just really was fabulous. And our PTA continued that right into their Welcome Back Breakfast, which wasn't just enjoyed by our regular staff here in the building, but they invited everybody, from our bus drivers to our TAs to our monitors, and really had a beautiful setup outside by our garden. It was really welcoming, particularly, I think, for our bus drivers to be able to participate, because very often they're off and about. But because we were sitting outside and we had our picnic table set up on the coffee truck ready to go, it was really a wonderful day for everybody. And it was really a celebration, I think our first celebration in Phoenisha this year. Another exciting event, we had our PBIS kickoff with our little ones just last Friday. You can see some things here around the cafeteria, where our theme this year is SOAR with the Phoenisha Eagle, really focusing on our safe behavior, only kind actions, always do your best, and responsible choices. Really trying to keep things simple for our little ones and to the point. And with that, you see our little gotcha ticket off to the left side and the thermometer to the right. If you turn around behind you, and there's a couple of others in the building, our students will be collecting their gotcha tickets, really as a sense of community, to build together to a school-wide comfy cozy day, where we will totally be able to come in in our comfy cozy, whether it's jammies or slippers or fuzzy blankets come in, and we can celebrate Phoenisha. And each time our students meet their goals, they'll work towards another community goal, such as maybe it's a pizza party or lots of different options for the school year ahead. The staff have been quite busy. We have, as you know, many initiatives. We have our Teachers College, which is advancing literacy. Our third grade teachers had the opportunity to go up to Bennett and work with the three, third grade teachers with the fourth and fifth grade teachers. And that's really the way the clusters in TC and advancing literacy goes. So, it was nice to have them be able to move up and work with the older grades. Today, and the K-2 teachers worked with our coach from TC here right in the building, and they worked by grade level, and it was a very successful day for all. We have ongoing math training to support our math program. We have our Superintendent's Conference Day, which will be a big focus for them. They'll be working with trainers on our math program for half a day. And then, most of our teachers will have time back in the buildings for the other half to work in their teams. Ongoing work continues with morning side, really continuing the circles in our classrooms, where students are working with their teachers, the four Rs, reading, writing, respect, and resolution. And really looking at, we've had some very open conversations on moving forward. How will we support our students in the transition for next year, as well as teachers and staff? And how that fits with the work we've been, you know, the ongoing work we've been doing with social emotional learning? So, that's another exciting part. Lots of things going on. We had our open house with fabulous turnout. We have here in the building our sunshine team, PBIS team, kind of the fun stuff for the year. We've really been talking about our school-wide celebrations and events that we'd like to hold throughout the year. Community engagement pieces. Our fire department will be coming on the 20th for fire prevention. I also heard rumor they may even be bringing the smokehouse, which is lots of fun. We're looking at inviting some speakers in again for Veterans Day, as we did last year. The Memorial Day Parade in the spring. We shared in the Hoppy Royal Court. Flag Day celebrations, holiday and spring celebrations. We also discovered that we have a time capsule that is still buried in our backyard here. So, we want to help make that part of our spring celebrations of Phoenisha this school year. So, we're excited for that, most likely in the spring. Upcoming PTA events. We're looking forward to our Welcome Back picnic, which has been rescheduled twice. So, third time, may third time be a charm. So, that'll be this Friday, and knock on wood, weather looks like it might be okay. We have our Phoenisha Fall Festival here in the building, October 17th, when our PTA comes. And it's really fall fun events that have to do with our garden, where they do things like planting garlic for the spring and different cleanups and things like that. So, it's just small events right here in the building that celebrate our fall in the area. And then, trunk or treat on that Saturday. And again, another community connection there, where we have our trunk or treat, but then the kids follow with the fire department and the parade through town. Oh, my goodness. Picture day tomorrow. Kindergarten and first grade field trips are coming up to Seed Song Farm. Second grade will have its trip to, they're planning a trip into our community here at Phoenisha, where they visit the bank and the post office, and the kids have just a wonderful day. We do our grade level meetings are coming up this week, Superintendent's Conference Day. Couple of fun things. We have a performance here scheduled with Kit's Interactive Theater, which will be in November. And we're hoping a trip to the Woodstock Theater in December for the Christmas shows. So, with that, there's a lot going on and a lot to look forward to. And thank you.
Principal Fallow?
Yes.
Can I just correct? I think this Friday, the Welcome Back picnic, it might be the 13th, not the 18th.
Oh, there we go. I already put it off a week. I will fix that. Thank you. Yes, this Friday, the 13th.
Any questions for Principal Fallow? Thank you, Liz.
Thank you. Have a great night.
You too. Item 4.01 is acceptance of minutes. The Board of Education hereby accepts the minutes of September 26, 2023. May I have a first? Trustee Jerome, second. Trustee Ramondo will take a roll call vote. Trustee Jerome?
Aye.
Trustee Mitchell Morrell?
Aye.
Trustee Goodrich?
Aye.
Trustee Lynch?
Aye.
Trustee Ramondo?
Aye.
Trustee Story? That's unanimous, thank you. Now, it's time for our student representative on the board to give her report, Sophia Odato.
Hello there. Recently, in student government, we've had our first October-themed lunch activity. Last week, Friday, we held a water jug holding competition, which was very fun. Next week, we look to have a musical chairs competition. And as a lot of you know, our planting day last Saturday was canceled again due to the weather. But it will be happening this Friday and Saturday, rain or shine. Throughout the high school, people have been catching the colds that come with fall, which is unfortunate. But seniors have been starting their college application process. Clubs have been meeting regularly. And sports teams are now deep into their seasons. Congratulations to the girls and boys varsity soccer teams that have solidified their spots at sectionals. Homecoming was last weekend, and despite the weather, it was a success, and it was lovely to see most of you there. Though the soccer games that Friday were unfortunately canceled, the Saturday sporting events and club booths drew an enthusiastic crowd and raised a large sum of money. Thank you.
Any questions for Sophia? I have a question. Sophia, what time is planting happening on Friday and Saturday?
Friday, it'll be right after school, so 2:45 to about 3:30. And then, Saturday, it's looking like 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., but it might not go the entire time.
Thank you. Item 6.01, Superintendent's Report.
Good evening. So, we are really happy to share that Principal Fallow has agreed to spearhead our MTSS initiative and the implementation of our Branching Minds platform next year. She will assume this role in the 24-25 school year. The position will be grant-funded and will be integral to ensuring that MTSS is implemented consistently and that the Branching Minds platform is utilized to its fullest extent to benefit all of our students. Ms. Fallow did have the opportunity to share this with her faculty on Friday. And, you know, we wanted to really ensure that she had the opportunity to speak with them before we announced this really exciting news. And we are so excited, and congratulations. New COVID tests. We just got a new shipment of COVID tests that has been, I believe, distributed to our nursing staff. And so, they can share those with families. They have expiration dates, I believe, of about now. But as we all know, the expiration dates are extended, and at least now, we're not giving out tests that expired in, I think what we had was June of '22. So, hopefully, as people are coming down with all manner of colds and illnesses in the fall, we can at least give them these tests, and they can either confirm or rule out COVID. The Board has requested academic presentations, so we're going to start that at our next meeting. And Assistant Superintendent Laffin is going to be presenting some information on our recently released three-through-eight data. And also, I have asked Ms. O'Donnell to come to the Board maybe in November to present on the fall athletic season, because the season kind of runs a few days past our next board meeting. So, to bring her at the next one was a little premature. So, we're going to work with her for that. An update on our EV bus grant. We did inquire, Assistant Superintendent Leclerc inquired with the EPA if they would consider giving us an extension for 18 months. And they very politely wrote back and said they really didn't think that that was something that they would be entertaining. But I did receive a call from a staff member in Pat Ryan's office early last week, and I had a lovely conversation with her. Name is Natalie Lincoln. And she offered to advocate on our behalf, and I very gratefully accepted that offer. So, I'm waiting to hear if she has been able to make any progress there. And also, the Board may recall, probably six months ago, we contracted with our architects to do an electric bus assessment report, and that was partially funded by NYSERDA, significantly funded by NYSERDA. We only had to fund a little bit. So, we received their draft report. We received the most recent draft today. It is actually, it's been submitted to NYSERDA, but they're doing a final review still, so we have yet to receive their final report. They have offered that once the report is finalized, they could summarize it and present to the Board. You know, this is one of those steps that I felt and we felt should be completed prior to moving forward with purchasing buses. We should actually have the assessment report done. So, that's another step towards implementation eventually. So, there was also recently a request for a timeline for our process for this year. So, there are many moving parts in the implementation for September of '24. Assistant Superintendent Laffin and Allison and I came and met with the Phoenisha faculty this afternoon and began addressing some of their concerns, because Principal Fallow had had a wonderful meeting with them and really kind of gathered all of their questions and concerns. And so, we at least have a full document. We've addressed some of them. Some of them, we're not going to be able to address yet. But we let them know that as we get more information, we will certainly share it. And now, Mr. Bono is going to begin planning for the transition to Bennett. And we will keep everybody up to date on that as his work starts. Mr. Dedana has already been planning. He met with the sixth grade faculty again today, collaboratively with Assistant Superintendent Laffin, and I believe Principal Bono was there as well. And he's also going to meet with the Bennett PTA, I believe, looking at early next week, right now. His process will include identifying room logistics, cafeteria and recess, and after-school activities. Um, his process will, uh, include identifying room logistics, cafeteria and recess and after-school activities. Um, he plans right now, um, on meeting with the parents of the incoming fifth and sixth grade students in the spring, bringing, uh, the fifth and sixth grade students into the building for a visit in June and then having an open house for both grades in August. Um, we are having our first playground meeting for Bennett, uh, next week to begin to identify the location for the additional equipment that we want to add. And once we have, um, that identified and then we can get some potential designs from the, um, playground, I wanna call them playground architects, the, the firm, Parketax. Um, then we will be sharing those, um, potential designs and gathering feedback and input. Um, I know the Phoenisha faculty have a lot of great suggestions and want to include a lot of sensory and accessibility options. So Mr. Harges has set a goal of issuing a purchase order for the equipment in January and he is really hoping to complete the installation in May because he wants to make sure that that, you know, he's, he's got a lot on his plate for next summer and he wants to make sure that that is taken care of and done and, um, we don't have to worry about that during the summer. As we've discussed before, there are going to be murals designed by students in both Bennett and the middle school so that when the students transition to these buildings, they will see their own designs. The art teachers will be collaborating with the muralist and the students and we appreciate their support for this important project. It'll really make a difference to the students to have a piece of the building that they have already, um, imprinted when they arrive. Um, also, we are gonna begin work on our new transportation contract shortly so that we can put that out to bid with the goal of awarding the contract prior to the budget for this coming year. This is a large component of our budget, so we want to have it finalized as soon as possible. And, um, lastly, I'm meeting with our Director of Technology on Friday with a goal of reorganizing the long-term planning webpage and then creating a separate transition planning page so that we can post the timeline and, uh, kind of our draft, or I don't wanna say draft goals, our tentative, um, steps along the way and knowing that things may shift a little bit, one way or the other, but we have, uh, definite, um, things that we want to accomplish by certain times of the year. And we are still waiting for our proposal for our communications plan that will also enhance our communication related to the transition process. And I think I said lastly, but, uh, that was misleading because I did wanna say we have another of our series of parent workshops scheduled for tomorrow evening for anyone who wants to tune in. This one is gonna focus on parenting skills that will help parents with self-regulation and self-care, which is incredibly important. Uh, the link is on our website and it will be, um, from seven to eight thirty tomorrow evening. So hopefully people have time to get home, have dinner, get kids settled and then log on.
Thank you, any questions for the Superintendent, Trustee Lynch?
Thank you very much, I, I'm sorry I missed it. Um, could you just repeat, the, you said the architect is doing the assessment for the EV buses? That was the one that we talked about last January, maybe timeframe-ish?
Yes.
Is that, which is, which firm is that, that's C-?
It's CPL.
CPL.
It's CPL, they've, they've done a draft report and they said, submitted it to NYSERTA. Um, they've made a couple of changes already based on feedback from NYSERTA and they've submitted it again and it's awaiting the final review.
Okay, and did that include, um, the discussion about just infrastructure in the community as well?
It has a lot, um, I will share the full report with the Board on Friday.
Okay.
It's still draft, but I wanna get it out to you.
Great, okay, thank you very much, sure. Trustee Jerome?
Thanks, um, so these two webpages that you're developing, will we be able to, um, look at, say, designs and for the, the playgr-, the changes that are happening with the facilities, there's so many moving pieces as you've mentioned. Um, and will there be full, like, details on each of them there? Or can we expect to look at that, um, kind of facilities improvement separately? Or I'm just trying to see how we follow the, the, the changes to the building themselves to accommodate the, the, the change in the student body?
That's a great question and we are just designing it. Um, we're starting to talk about creating these webpages. Uh, the first webpage is just reorganizing the long-term planning page 'cause there is so much there and I think it can be better organized. Um, in terms of the transition process, I'm happy to, um, take input and feedback from the, from the Board and the Communications Committee. So we can work through that all year, I don't, I don't have a set, there's nothing that I don't wanna share.
Trustee Goodrich?
So I, I heard you talk about the Director of Technology and things coming up. Will the Director of Technology be presenting, um, what changes are going on this year or any, or doing a presentation?
He's not scheduled to do a presentation, but if there's a request for a specific presentation, we can certainly, um, put something together. He has his timeline in terms of the transition, um, in the spring of coming through and inventorying all of the technology equipment that's here and seeing where it needs to go and how it needs to be placed in the, the rooms at Bennett. But that's, a lot of that will be driven by, once it's determined what teaching is gonna happen in which rooms, those instructors, those teachers will, um, have a lot of input in where things are placed because they know best.
Thank you.
Yep.
Yeah, any other questions for the Superintendent? I just have one question, um, the, um, playground project at Bennett, will that be a community project like it was before?
I don't think we'll be able to do that because we're gonna have to get it in, um, early in May. But we can s- I think that was a wonderful, uh, experience and it really helped people to feel, um, invested in it, so we will bring that up with Mr. Harges.
Okay, great, thank you very much for the report. Item seven point zero one, the Board will report district news. Any trustees have district news to report? Trustee Story?
I just wanna thank the community for coming out and supporting our students' homecoming. It was a wet rainy, um, but it ended up drying out it for a little bit. But, uh, thank you everybody for, to the community that came and supported our students and our athletes. It's, it's great, thank you.
Ditto. Anybody else? All right. Item nine point zero one is student and public comment. I'm sorry, where did I go? Oh, sorry. Acknowledge public be heard comments from the last Board meeting. I don't believe we had any speakers at the last Board meeting, right? Okay, and nobody tonight either. Should I read the statement anyway? Okay, no, I did last time, okay, I won't. All right, so we'll move on to, um, ah, we have a speaker, okay. All right, okay, I'll read, I'll just gonna, I'm gonna read our statement, Mr. Wolf. "The Board appreciates hearing from the public, including students, on any agenda or non-agenda item. Please understand that by our adopted parliamentary procedure, the Board can't engage in discussion or answer questions during public be heard. Please know that we hear you and we take all your comments into consideration. The Board does reserve the right to correct any inaccuracies or misinformation during public be heard. Please limit your comments to three minutes, be civil and do not name any particular individuals or promote any social ventures or products. People wishing to express individual student or personnel concerns can bring them to the Superintendent's attention in private." Mr. Wolf?
Hello, I'm Rick Wolf. Sorry I came in late so I didn't sign on the sheet. Uh, I just wanna thank the Board for doing, really doing their, um, uh, due diligence and their fiduciary responsibility as far as, uh, moving forward with, um, consolidating the, the district and even the EV buses, you know, waiting on that. So I see that the battery company that was supposed to move into, uh, the old IBM is probably folding up also, you know, so at least we aren't jumping on that. Also, I don't know if this is true or not, I read it on, um, online, is that we've spent eighteen thousand dollars in, in foil requests coming from, uh, Open, which, again, they're, they've been very outspoken about, um, oh, sorry, it's okay, I'm not gonna go over three minutes. Their, their foil requests of eighteen thousand dollars on information that's out there already. So, and they've always been very outspoken about, um, saving the district money. Um, also, there's a couple of Board members that did contribute to, uh, to Open also as they're filing, um, I don't know, some type of appeal with the State Education Department. So, but thank you for your job.
Thank you, Mr. Wolf. Um, I, I just wanna respond to that briefly, the, what I read on social media, um, it was, it, it was specific to, uh, for, the cost of foil requests, I believe in the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two school year. Um, but it was an example of how expensive foil requests can get and, you know, and the taxpayers are really funding that. It wasn't about any, uh, any, uh, anything that's happening right now. Yes? Anybody else wish to speak at public be heard? Please state your name when you get to the mic, thank you.
Hi, my name is Megan, uh, Megan Fitzgerald, I'm a resident here in Phoenisha. I think my son wanted to say something too, he's a student here, but he got a little bit shy at the last minute. Um, what he had wanted to speak about was some of the benefits of the smaller classes that he's had here at Phoenisha. Um, we transferred here from a school in Philadelphia where he went to kindergarten and he had twenty-one children per class, um, which, you know, isn't outrageous, but what he was saying was, you know, he felt very overwhelmed with all of his friends every day. Um, there was also mainstreaming of the IEP children, um, in that classroom, um, which, you know, has its benefits as well as its, um, downsides. Um, but it, it did have a lot more distractions with the additional children and the aides in the classrooms, um, for him. So he's been very happy here at Phoenisha, he also enjoys how, uh, naturey the school is and I'll think along with a lot of his classmates, he's really upset about the closure. Now, as a parent and a taxpayer, um, I also have some questions about what the costs of the disclosure is going to be. Um, I, my, from what I've read and heard, there seems to be a public bond that's going to finance the construction expansion of Bennett, um, to, uh, allow for the consolidation of these schools, of these three elementary schools. Um, and I think that the last time that this was assessed was prior to the pandemic, the cost of this was prior to the pandemic and interest rates have skyrocketed since then, construction costs have skyrocketed since then. And I'm very concerned about what the cost to the taxpayers will be to finance this infrastructure. I'm also concerned about what some of the hidden costs are, are, are going to be about, um, in order to build, um, this infrastructure. Are there sports fields that are going to be eliminated to make room for parking? Um, that's obviously going to be needed to accommodate the increased number of staff and faculty on campus. Um, are there, you know, I, I read in the Freeman about, um, the turning down of the eight-point-three-million-dollar grant, uh, for new buses last week or a couple of weeks ago. And in large part because there wasn't the infrastructure to charge them in the district. So I'm concerned and I have a question of whether this consolidation plan impacted that because all of the school district is gonna have to be fully electric by twenty thirty-five and we have a huge transportation cost because of the large geographic region of our district. So I'm really concerned about what some of the hidden costs of this proposal, um, this proposed centralization is going to be as well. And I'd really like, um, to see some increased transparency and discussion surrounding this. Um, and I think that's it, and please, not just on social media, we really need better forums and more transparency all around. Social media has algorithms that promotes content that people are going to disagree with and it's not the forum for polite and productive discussion. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Yes.
I just wanted to address a couple of things just in terms of providing factual information. Um, so for the transition next year, our class sizes are not going to change. Um, and in terms of the long-term look at consolidation, um, the infrastructure plans that were put together, uh, many years ago were very different and for a very different sized district. Um, and we will be engaging in visioning and community dialogue and design work for that, but we don't have, um, costs to share yet, that will be done with input. And we're very glad that your son is enjoying his time in Aunt Yora.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak at public be heard? All right, we'll close public be heard and move on to item ten point zero one, discussion and possible action. And we will continue our conversation about, uh, creating our twenty twenty-three, twenty-four Board Goals. Do trustees have questions, comments, suggestions, Trustee Jerome?
I do have some questions, um, you know, I'm looking at the current goals on the website and, um, they primarily focus on the reconfiguration and, um, then a more general statements on just what our values are. And, um, as I was thinking through, um, goals, my goals definitely extend to curricula and, and, um, you know, promoting certain things within, um, the system, but don't relate to those two items per se, some, some of them, some of my thoughts do. Um, but how does it work? Do we develop new goals, are we just building on these goals? I'm, I'm a little confused.
I mean, I'll, I'll take a stab at answering that, but, um, I'm, there are other people who, who may have more experience than I do. Um, I'm just thinking back to, uh, two weeks ago when, uh, Dr. Bill Christiansen was here and, um, he was telling us, and I think that we, we were also getting, um, input from him when we developed our goals about a year ago, um, that typically when you're doing a, a goal, certainly as ambitious as our, as our first goal was, uh, for last year, that is a long-term goal and what he was recommending last time was that we would build off of that goal, perhaps making it a little less verbose and, um, and then adding, uh, action steps to, that are sort of like smart steps instead of smart goals. Um, that, you know, the, the goal would be a, a supporting the long-term plan, but that the action steps would be measurable.
But not expanding our goals to be more inclusive or, he didn't talk about that. No, I do remember that, that piece and that, that's understandable and yet it seems narrow to me.
Uh, to me, I think that it's really broad. And I feel like, um, goals about curricu- like curriculum and things like that are not necessarily the Board's purview, that that is really more administrative. Um, you know, we, we agree to adopt curriculum and we agree, um, you know, to some degree, what's, what's being taught based on the New York State Learning Standards and all the other mandates that, that kind of drive what's, what's taught in schools. Um, but we don't necessarily, uh, as far as I understand, we don't, as a school board, um, dictate anything about curriculum, but I could be wrong. Trustee Lynch?
Yeah, thank you, just to add to that discussion point specifically, uh, Trustee Bishop, I was, I was actually thinking about, I, I spent some time just like- I was, I was actually thinking about, I spent some time just like reflecting on the, the mission and vision of the school system, of OCS. And one of the things that struck me that I love is about being global citizens. And I do think that if we went in with something around being a global citizen, I do think that that provides room for the administration to help us think about what the priorities are, whether that is around things that are related to the curriculum, like language, or nanotechnology, or, you know, the arts and humanities, or civics, or other things, right, that we all think of as when we think of being global citizens. But I liked that construct, and I wondered if we could say something like, you know, support the development of a district's long-term plan that centers the idea of global citizenship or something, so that we can start to get down to more of the specifics about the things that we all hold dear about this community.
I found the email that I was looking for. Can I just quickly? You know, I have, you know, in terms of goals, renewable energy, infrastructure, advanced nanotech curricula, elevating the arts, putting the A in STEAM, and really making that a priority, because we, we are so, have such a superlative liberal arts program, right? Like, I guess I do feel like those values, those, those are goals that should be in there along with any reconfiguration of our facilities and student body. Just my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other, yes? Trustee Mitchell Morell?
I'm not positive this would fall under goals necessarily, but I'm just thinking, like, all these different configurations we're doing, like with the sixth grade moving, and then we'll be K through four, and then we'll be K through five, are opportunities to see what's working and what isn't working. So, I was just thinking, like, some, like, flexible language about, like, learning and kind of taking stock on these different configurations and how they're working and not working would be helpful.
Trustee Story?
I want to make sure that the board is thinking of the board's duties and not day-to-day operations, because data, data operations is nothing, is not in the board's purview. So, the, the goals, we have to make sure we keep them that are in the board's purview. I hear lots of great ideas, but I don't hear lots of ideas that can, are actually managed by the board. So, that's where we've got to understand day-to-day operations, superintendent and administrations, not board's purview. So, this is where it gets tricky of what is board's purview and what's not. So, that's just the line that we really need to be careful of as we're developing our goals, is what we have, what we can do and what we can't.
Trustee Ramondo?
Okay, so I wrote this, and I'm trying to stay in this guise, where we're, we're thinking high level, and we're not getting involved where we don't belong. So, "The board oversees all students' equitable access to high-quality academic programs that serve our district mission of fostering productive global citizenship. This will be monitored for success through reporting from administration." Part of it, maybe a word, I don't know.
Trustee Jerome?
Yeah, I think that that starts to take the very high-level view. I think that in terms of our fiduciary fiscal responsibility, one piece that I think trustee Mitchell Morell mentioned is building flexibility into whatever the reconfiguration is. Because with capital, I was just hearing this morning about the Burlington Public School District, who's building a new high school. Capital projects are about unknowns, right, and things that surface. And I think that that is something, it's, this is a very long-term, is an involved project. And I want to make sure that we're assessing, monitoring, and not, and working in phases or working with a mindset of flexibility and iteration as we go along. I think that is actually our fiscal responsibility, because it's, it is a big capital project for us, right? So, but, yeah, that, that's great language. Trustee Ramondo, thank you.
Trustee Ramondo?
Just, just so I'm clear with what I wrote. It, mine is more about academics than it is about the long-term plan, because we want to incorporate this. And what Dr. Bill told us last time was that we start with this, like something super tight like this. And then that allows the administration to build out their response to our goals and what they're going to do, and then we create our action steps after that. So, for me, I didn't write one about the long-term plan. This is the one I wrote. But yes, we have to do that as well. So, this is just one of however many we do or create this year.
Trustee Goodrich?
So, I like what trustee Ramondo said, and just to add to that, somehow fit in the word 21st century of, you know, bring us up to speed of 21st century level of high school education. I'm not sure what the right words are for that. Yeah, but, so, I, I'm not, I'm really hard, I've always had a hard time being, making high-level statements. And so, I'm going to say a couple other ones. So, if the superintendent needs this added as a goal, maybe we could support the superintendent development of new and innovative-
Trustee Goodrich, could you just hold the mic a little closer to your mouth?
Sure. Is this better? Yep, okay. So, "Support superintendent development of new and innovative methods to collect pre-K student enrollment data to better forecast future student enrollment." The rationale for that is as student enrollment decreases, small fluctuations in student enrollment makes managing class size more difficult. So, it's important to have as accurate data as, as, as we can, so we don't have any surprises, especially in the kindergarten level. Would that help you?
I think that the thing that we struggle with is collecting data and then holding that data on people who are not actually registered in the district. And then if we, for some reason, have any kind of security breach or information breach, then we have exposed other people's data. If we are collecting data on students who are not yet our students, how far do we go in terms of proving the students, the custody, and the residency? And then also, as Assistant Superintendent Claire discovered last year after analyzing it, and I don't think any of us had really analyzed to this degree, but there was a change of three students, but really, I forget, was it 63 that left and 60 that moved in, or the other way?
It was six, yeah, 60 that moved in, 63 that left, between September and March of last year.
And so, even, even though we may have X number of families here right now, two years from now, that grade level may look very different. It, it's a, it's a difficult data point to actually construct.
So, what you're saying is, you know, we, we're here to support you, whatever you want, and whatever you think is necessary there. So. So, another item I had here is, you know, I've mentioned this in prior meetings. I, I feel we've kicked the can down the hallway quite a bit as far as upgrading our high school science and technology classrooms. And if we don't put something in there to say, hey, we're going to do it, you know, even if we say we're going, as a goal, we're going to put it in there three years from now, it'd be nice to actually, you know, say something that we're going to, you know, we're, we're going to have a goal to do this, because if we don't do any, if we don't say that, then we're never going to get it done, you know? So, I would support the superintendent development of a long-term architect plan, don't have to implement it, for new, modern high school science and technology classrooms, excluding chemistry classroom, which was recently upgraded. So, I don't know how the board feels about adding this. I'm not saying we're going to do anything this year or next year, but at least it should be a long-term plan that we can consider.
I, I think that those are great suggestions. And I also believe that the Facilities Committee has, has discussed updating the science rooms, the science classrooms, and that is on a list. I'm not sure what the date is. Superintendent, can you tell us more about that?
So, I think right now, we are involved in the design process for the classrooms that are going to be updated next summer. And then the science classrooms are on the list to be designed for the following summer. Is that correct, Assistant Superintendent? Yes, the summer of '25. So, they would be designed this time next year to be put out to bed. We can get the details from our Director of Facilities, but they are definitely on the list.
And remember, we get a, we get a lot of the, we get, not a lot, we get all of the recommendations from the high school and the middle school principals. So, they, they basically are telling us in the Facilities Committee, these are the rooms that we feel need to be done first. So, I understand that, you know, you're, you're saying the science classrooms are woefully under what they should be, but it's not, you know, whether it's the teachers, whether it's the administrators, they're doing an amazing job with what they have. And they aren't seeing it as, as the biggest priority. There are other areas that they believe is more, Family and Consumer Science is a prime example of something that they believe is a higher priority.
But they are, the science classrooms are on the list.
They are on the list.
They are on the list.
But, you know, again, not, not being able to do everything. Yeah.
Trustee Story?
I think this is a very good example of how our administrators are in the buildings every day and do their job every day, and they know what needs to be done, and opposed to us as board members, that we get the reports and stuff like that. You know, the science rooms, the administration knows that it needs to be done, and they have it in their plan. But, you know, that's where they see it in their priority.
Trustee Jerome?
I, that is understood, but then it also just begs the question. I think this is so great to have this conversation here at the board meeting, so people know that we're talking about this, you know, and that the administration is talking about it. You know, future-facing values is something that you could maybe wrap up that arts and science conversation into, and to maybe adapt it into some, to trustee Ramondo's initial exploration to a high-level statement. But I think that, while we definitely understand that prioritization happens within the administrative level, having those visionary, high-level goals of future-facing science, and as I say, my big thing is elevating the arts. And because it is such a great source of pride for the district and an indicator of student achievement, it also promotes critical thinking, community, language, nonverbal communication. That's why I'd like to see the A in STEAM represented in our goals and values. That's not to say that we need to, somebody needs to hire another teacher or teach a class. It's just saying, like, Auntie Nora already is amazing at this. I want that, I want this to be talked about more in our, in our goals. And maybe not the goals, maybe that's not the appropriate place. Trustee Story, you would know more, but maybe in our values or something like that. But I love that this conversation is happening in public.
Great, thank you. Oh, trustee Mitchell Morell?
I just wanted to support the idea of saying something like, like bringing, you know, our learning spaces into the ever-changing landscape of the 21st century. Like, it can be broad, as you say, but I do think that's a great thing to include in the goals, possibly in Megan's goal.
So, this kind of reminds me of last year's conversation around the goals, and we literally wordsmithed it, right? I mean, it, it took a couple of meetings, and it is, it is definitely a process. Trustee Lynch?
I just wanted to come back to trustee Mitchell Morell's suggestion as well, which I actually see as, I think she was suggesting it as a second goal to the one that trustee Ramondo read, but maybe there's room for more creative minds to bring them together. And that's just the, she talked about the, the idea of learning from the, the number of transitions ahead of us this academic year. And I wonder if there isn't something in there that the board should be thinking about in terms of accountability to our community as well. So, it's not just about, yeah, executing, you know, on these transitions, but it's about, you know, holding ourselves accountable to the community, right? And making sure that, that, you know, we're, not only are we sharing what we're learning, but we're acting upon what we're learning. And I think, to me, that feels just, yeah, really important and timely for this particular academic year.
I was actually going to say, as I'm listening to you, I feel like that's a next year and the following year goal. We're not, because we're working towards implementing it, and then the learning from it would be in the next year and the following year.
Absolutely, you're right. It could go for several years, actually, right?
But I don't feel like it, I feel like this year's, this year is the implementation, and that goal about learning from the transition would be next year.
Well, I would argue you've started the implementation about six months ago and did really good work deliberately with principals and others. And we talked, we heard from the middle school principal last spring. So, I, I would suggest that we start to put in some of those opportunities for learning and measurement now. And I, I think that would be helpful, and just again, help our overall communication and transparency with the community.
I'd like to read something that I wrote. I, I did write a goal, building off of, the goal number, woo, goal number one, sorry, from last year. So, my goal, my draft is, "The Antioch Board of Education supports the successful implementation of the district's long-term plan to reconfigure schools, approved in formal resolution by the Board of Education on May 2, 2023." And I wrote it like that because I feel like the resolution that we approved in May is a guide for our long-term plan. And it, it gives all the reasons, I mean, you know, not in great detail, but it gives a lot of the reasons why we made the resolution to reconfigure in the end. And basing it, basing what I wrote on Dr. Bill's suggestion last week, or last time, to make the goal brief, and then follow it with some smart action steps. Action step number one is, "The superintendent shall provide recommendations and a plan to the board to assure all required preparation for Bennett Elementary School to provide K-5 instruction and services, Woodstock Elementary School to provide K-4 instruction and services, and for the Antioch Middle School to provide instruction and services for grades 6 through 8 to begin in September 2024." Action step number two, "The superintendent and/or her designees shall provide monthly updates during public meetings, ensuring progress and informing the board of needs in the areas of staffing, transportation, facilities and infrastructure, curriculum and instruction, including special education, and food services, supporting the first phases of reconfiguration." And action step number three, "The board's ad hoc committee overseeing the implementation of the district's long-term plan, including the superintendent, central administration, and board trustees, in collaboration with the Communications Committee, will begin visioning exercises with students, teachers, families, and members of the community to address the hierarchy of needs and explore innovative ideas toward the reconfiguration to a central campus by 2028." With the exception of the first action step, which is really, in my opinion, just is Bennett- Bennett ready for K-5, is Woodstock ready for K-4, is the middle school ready for 6-8? The second and third action steps, the language came out of the resolution, and they, and I think all three of them provide us an opportunity to really make sure that we have, that we have accountability, that we can share with the community at least monthly, if not more. And I feel like what we, what we're getting now from the superintendent in terms of progress toward even the first steps of reconfiguration are, we're getting, we're getting two reports a month that are, that are available to the community, and, and I think that our Communications Committee has recognized and is working, you know, with the superintendent to improve communication, and ad hoc is working to improve outreach and participation with the community. I know it's a lot of words.
Can I just ask, I thought the exercise was just to talk about the goal, and then wait for the superintendent to make the steps before we went with the action steps, so I'm just curious if this is different than that, or if this is, okay.
Yeah, this was just me going crazy.
No, great, I love it. Yeah, okay, I feel like I always need to ask verification, so just want to make sure, okay.
But, you know, certainly, the action steps, we would absolutely work with the superintendent.
Would you mind rereading just the big goal, then?
Sure. "The Antioch Board of Education supports the successful implementation of the district's long-term plan to reconfigure schools approved in formal resolution by the Board of Education on May 2nd, 2023."
Trustee Jerome?
Of course, I have to read all that you wrote, there was a lot in there, and I look forward to also, you know, rereading everybody's ideas. The only thing that comes to mind immediately is that I'm a little bit uncomfortable basing so much on that resolution, because there was so much packed in there, and I think it can work against this idea of flexibility. So that's something that I'm noting in my, in my head.
Trustee Story?
To that note, the resolution is fixed and done and voted on. This board has to support it. Even, I know you were not on the board when the, the board voted on it, but we have to, that, that resolution has been, thing, we still have to support it and go move forward with it.
I understand that I wasn't on the board. I also understand that, given the world we live in, the, the huge amount that, as fiduciary wards of our district's finances, given the scope of the investments, that it's not set in stone, in my opinion, it has to be flexible, we have to look at results, we have to have accountability, and we have to be able to make accommodations. We would be short-sighted and irresponsible if we didn't. That's, I do understand I was not on the board when it was voted on.
I, I think that, you know, the resolution, as it's written, is, it's absolutely a long-term plan, and there, you know, the endpoint would, would result in having a central campus, and all this, all of our students would be learning and, and active on, on one large property. I think we understand that, that anything can happen, you know, I mean, we, we do have to, the community has to vote on a major, you know, financial project, but that's still our long-term goal, you know, based on, on the, on that resolution. So I do feel strongly that we should, as a board, we should be supporting that resolution in all aspects of it, and we will, you know, we will get there if, if it's meant to be, right, by careful planning and implementation and communication with the community and, and all parties. And I think that's kind of the only way to look at it, since it does exist, it is, and it was, it was approved. I don't know if, if others feel differently about it.
Trustee Goodrich?
Yeah, I thought the long-term plan was well-written, and I liked the way the wording that was in there. I view our job as trustees for the long-term plan is, you know, the, the people in the community have to vote on that plan for the, for the centralized campus, and our job is to make sure they have all the information accurately, pros and cons. There's going to be cons, right? I mean, obviously, you know, the cost of it is, is something they have to approve. So we just have to do our job, due diligence, and present the facts, and that's our job, right? And they, and they're up, and it'd be up to the community to vote.
Trustee Lynch?
Yeah, I think, I think our language is really important here, in that we don't have a long-term plan yet, we have a building utilization plan, right, and we're building a long-term plan, and, and I think that that's really important, and I, and there was a vote on a resolution, and we are here to see it through. However, that language in a goal doesn't feel accessible to me in terms of the community, because not everyone understands what happened on May 2nd, right? We're assuming everybody does, and I would love to think about making our goal accessible to everyone, so everyone understands what it is we are working towards as a board, instead of using language like, you know, the resolution on May 2nd. That requires people to now go look that up, read the whole thing, take that step. I would love us to be thinking about more accessible language, and again, helping us all use this, the right language for, for what we, what we're after this year, so to speak, in a long-term planning phase that could be multiple years.
Thank you. Other comments? Trustee Ramondo?
I used the thesaurus, and I found some new words to put into mine, thanks to you guys. So you ready? This is round two. "The Antioch Board of Education oversees all students' equitable access to high-quality, modern, student-centered academic programs that serve our district mission of fostering productive global citizenship. This will be monitored for success through consistent, monthly reporting from administration." They generally do this anyway, so, this piece of it. There you go.
Trustee Story?
Can we have those versions, and your version, and trustee Ramondo's sent to our district clerk, and then we can discuss this again?
Yeah, I was just wondering, how do we do this? So maybe, I know trustee Jerome had some language that she was, that she has written down, maybe we could all send it to the board clerk, and because we've read it, we've read it aloud in, in the meeting, can it be added to our minutes under this discussion point? Or how would that work?
Yeah, since we talked about it in public, I can add it to the minutes, but there can't be any dialogue back and forth on how to, to adjust it, to make it, you know, to combine them. But yeah, I can add them to the minutes, absolutely.
Good. I mean, I think that's a good way to kind of collect them and have them accessible to each of us, and then when the, when the agenda is in draft, and we can go into board docs and access, access it, then we can start wordsmithing it on our own, and bring it back to the next board meeting for another public conversation. Trustee Story?
I'm confused, you, can, can our district clerk just email it to all the board, all the board members instead of going? Because we're not going to find them on our minutes until the agenda goes live, until two, three days before the board meeting. So everybody, can everybody just send their information to our district clerk, and she will forward it to all of us?
Yes, as long as there's no back and forth, as long as we're not having a conversation via email, and, and I guess then, whatever we send to you that you're going to share with all of us, we can work on that, but I think it should also go in the minutes.
No, definitely, it has to go in the minutes, but we need it, because the minutes, the board members will not get the minutes until the agenda goes live. So that's why I'm saying if she can forward it, again, we won't, there's no discussion, there's no emailing event in between any of us. It'll, we'll discuss it at our next board meeting.
Sounds good. Trustee Mitchell Morell?
I just wanted to kind of piggyback off of what Caroline and Sarah were saying, and just kind of, when we're writing the goals, like, remind ourselves that we don't exist in like, a bubble or a vacuum, and it's not just like, May 2nd, this happened, and all, it's like, there's so many, there's the huge bond vote, there's several reconfigurations before the final permanent state, and it's just like, I just think we have to consider the bigger picture before we like, zero in on the micro, kind of, see the macro.
Trustee Lynch?
Oh, I was just going to suggest, because I heard you say, sorry, I'm going back to the direction about, to the district clerk, but maybe, are, is it allowable for all of us to send the district clerk what we wrote in collection, because we've all read it out loud, including Clark's, including, sorry, Emily's and Caroline's, my, we all read something. Do you want all of those there, or are you suggesting that we just take yours and Megan's, and then wordsmith them from there? I'm happy to do either, I just wanted to be clear.
I think it's okay to, if, if she receives all of them, and, you know, because then it sort of refreshes our memory about what we discussed, we, you know, we've discussed a lot. And, you know, I just want to, I guess my caution is that we don't bite off more than we can chew. It is a one, you know, these are one-year goals, even though the long-term planning goal is like, potentially a five-year goal, I'm hoping that, that what we're trying to achieve in the goal can be achieved in one year. It's a one-year chunk of a big plan.
I thought you said the goals were three to five years?
Yep, three to, like, typically three to five. No, there, you know, it's, it's a three to five-year goal, but that's why, that's actually why I wrote the action steps, because I feel like, like, the, the long-term plan is the overarching goal of what I wrote. And then the action steps are things that I think should happen this year. And, you know, you can read them and decide. But, yeah, and then, you know, just wordsmith them, craft or not, and, and we'll come back for more conversation next time. Trustee Jerome?
Nothing to do with reconfiguration, I just wanted to read one more so that I can include it in my email, which is surrounding renewable energy, and just with the, with the regret of having to sort of explore more with our EV buses, but yet, integrating renewable energy infrastructure into our main campus would reflect our deep value in, of the environment and sustainability and our region's future. You know, in our logo, we have our mountainscape, and we're, we care so much about our environment. I would love to see that in manifested, if not with EV buses, but perhaps in some other way. So I just say it out loud now, so that we can email it and have that maybe as part of the discussion as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions about our goals discussion? It's going to take us some time, but that's fine.
Yeah, I guess just, is there a deadline? Is there a time you usually do it?
The, we have to get our, the superintendent cannot make her goals until the board makes our goals, so, because she makes her goals off of ours. So generally, we need to get these done sooner than later. Usually, they're done no later than November.
I, I'd like to say that our, our deadline for, you know, for approving some goals would be November, and right now, we have one meeting scheduled in November, so at our November meeting, we should really be, really be focusing on that date as our adoption date for our goals, if possible. Okay.
I would just reiterate that our, our, the main focus of our energy is going to be on the transitions related to September, and we are happy to support other initiatives, but the main focus of our energy will be on the September transitions.
Thank you for all that conversation, it was great, honestly. That's such good input. Item 10.02, discuss, we're going to discuss the preferred start time for executive sessions. You know, I think it's important for us to, to have at least a plan in mind, you know, it's in terms of, do we want to start our meetings? If we say our board meetings start at 6:00, do we want to start at 6:00, whether we have an executive session or not? Do we want to start earlier if, you know, if we can agree on a time, you know, just so that people who are busy, people who are working, people who are involved in a lot of other community volunteerism are not, you know, making plans and then having to change plans or cancel plans. So, you know, a few times now, I think we've started meetings at 5:00 PM. Tonight, we start with, with the executive session. Tonight, we did 5:30, because we just want to make sure everybody can be here. It's, I think it's really important, especially in executive session, it's hard to catch people up when they, when they can't be here, and we understand that people have busy lives. So, any thoughts about that?
Trustee Mitchell Morell?
I think the 6:00 PM is usually good, but I do think, I think we should be able to make an exception once or twice a year, when it's going to go over four or five hours. I mean, I think, I wasn't at the last meeting because I had COVID, but I think that one, it kind of did make sense, because didn't it go till 10:00? Like, I wouldn't personally want to be here much past 10:00. So I think if you're, if you, and that's, I feel like usually, does that happen in September? Is that kind of a beginning-of-year thing, or not necessarily? Okay, I mean, I think there should be so, I mean, obviously, we don't want to do it as a regular thing, but I think if we're going to go past 10:00, it does make sense to start half an hour or an hour, if people can do it.
Other, trustee Ramondo?
Perhaps a suggestion is if we do have executive session, to cut it in the middle and do a 5:30 start, if that's possible? I don't know, maybe.
Trustee Story?
I've seen it all different ways. We've done it, we, if we were going to have a long, long exec session, we've started it earlier. I've stayed in board meetings to midnight in the past, so that's, once we generally get about 9:00 o'clock, that's when most of us sitting at this table start to not feel the best after being, after our administrators have been, being at work all day. So that's some of the other things that we have to think of, too, that it's a late night for all of us, so I would, if it's, if we know it's going to be a long, late exec night, exec session, I would prefer to start it earlier. You know, I'm flexible with what's going on.
Is 5:00 too early? Trustee Lynch?
I can speak up and just say thank you for the flexibility you've already shown me. I do work full-time and have a lot of commitments at this hour, so I think we all do. So I'm happy to just, with the, I understand it's more work for our district clerk, but I'm happy to also do it case by case, knowing what agenda setting looks like. I think if we can just make the commitment during agenda setting to try to block it out, as you do very well here with timelines and such, and, and then we can do it case by case, I think that's fine. I think all of us make this, you know, very high priority, if not the first priority. So I, I trust that that would continue, and I also agree that after 9:00, not many productive conversations happen, so I think 10:00 would be the, the limit for most of us, and if we can get there between 6:00 and 10:00, most meetings, that sounds reasonable with, you know, but Uh, with, you know, but when, when needed to call it early, I think that that would be fine.
Trustee Mitchell Morrell?
I'm just gonna agree that I think the case by case probably makes the most sense.
I, I think for, for me, maybe, maybe the trick is to just not schedule anything at five o'clock on a Tuesday, again. So, um, yeah, and, and that's not a big deal because I, all my work is volunteer work, I am not, I'm, I'm, I'm retired. At least I, you know, on paper, yeah.
I guess I, I guess I would say then, I wish that five would be the exception, I'd like to stick with six, because we've already planned our lives around that with the calendar being set, you know, in early May or whenever it was.
I think it's, this six o'clock is what, unless there's something pressing or we have a very long meeting, I think that's what.
Yeah, I think, I think it's only, oh, that, five, five or 5:30 would be the exception and that's if we think we're gonna have a lengthy executive session. Everybody okay with that? Yeah?
And then just as much warning as possible would also be great.
Absolutely.
And for any high school student who would like to do babysitting, please let us know.
All right. On to item 10.03, uh, discussion of the resolution process. I asked to put this on and I wanted to, uh, discuss, it's really about the, uh, specifically about the resolution process from our last board meeting. And, um, and I, just to really kind of keep my thoughts straight, I, I wrote stuff down, so again, I apologize, I can get wordy. As board president, it's my responsibility to facilitate an effective and efficient meeting, assuring that all voices are heard. First, I want to address a specific issue. Trustee Lynch was correct in proposing a motion to amend the resolution about EV buses during the discussion phase at our September 26th meeting. The procedure that would have followed her proposal to amend would have included asking for a first and a second. And if so moved, the board would have voted on amending the resolution. If that pa, if that vote passed, we would have worked on wording and potentially amending the resolution. Then we would have voted on the amended resolution. We basically stumbled through a conversation and ultimately relied on information that proved to be erroneous. We are all human, we are all intelligent, engaged and committed to our board work and none of us are experts. To that end, and in an effort to facilitate more effectively, I'm proposing the following, which I would, I will do my very best to implement in the future and I know that this is all up for, for conversation. You know, these aren't rules, these are just proposals. All trustees have an equal voice and should have an opportunity to feel heard and understood. No single voice should prevail and our discussions, even our disagreements should be respectful. No question or comment should be dismissed verbally or non-verbally by speaking over each other, eye-rolling, head-shaking, et cetera. It is challenging for me to monitor this in the moment, but I'll try. I often don't catch many of these behaviors till I watch the video, but when I do, if I do, I'll address it with the individual trustees in the future and I just want to be clear, I do not watch the videos. It's not how I spend my free time. But if there's an issue, if there's a contentious conversation, I do go back and watch that, that part of the, uh, video because I want to make sure that if I don't feel like we did it right, I have to go back and take a look because I, I just want to make sure we're doing it right. We will follow Robert's Rules of Order, allowing each trustee to ask one question and I know many times, you know, people will say, I have, I have a number of questions. And you'll ask a question and as soon as it's answered, you'll ask the next one and, and you're like, it's just a, it becomes sort of a, a conversation instead of just questions and answers. So I really want to follow Robert's Rules of Orders of, of order. Allowing each trustee to ask a question, giving others a chance to respond and, and ask their own questions before that trustee asks a second question. And, and as the meeting facilitator, I'll come back to each trustee, um, you know, just keep signaling me. And, and I, I, I try to keep looking around, if I don't see everybody, trustee Story or superintendent will, uh, will nudge me. I feel strongly about this one, only one mic should be on at a time and that's the trustee who has the floor. We will limit sidebar conversations. If a comment is worth whispering, it's probably worth stating for the record. If one trustee has a question or a concern, it's likely that others share that concern. We will take time to cover issues thoroughly. Even if we need to pause for a Google search or a search through board docs for historical data or even a motion to take a brief executive session in the event we need to contact our attorneys and sometimes that happens. We'll follow the NISBA's strong recommendation that the board officers speak last so that all trustees may speak without undue influence from others. If a trustee has access to information to support their argument or better make a point, they should feel comfortable sharing, sharing it at the board table if it'll, if it'll support the issue that they're trying to bring forth. I encourage all trustees and our board clerk to continue ta, can you, continue taking advantage of trainings offered by NISBA, NICE, BOCs, uh, many of our, uh, of the BOCs programs even offer board trainings, so we just have to kind of keep looking and, 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 you know, it's, I know it's not easy to make yourself available if you're working full-time. All of these proposals are important to me, however, I understand as board president, I'm one of seven and we all have an equal voice. If you're interested in, uh, and, and if you're interested, it will take a commitment for each, on each trustee's part to improve the process and our outcomes. And I'm interested in your thoughts and I wonder if there are any questions or suggestions for further clarity. Trustee Story?
Um, I got thoughts, but honestly, it, after reading all of that stuff, I'm, cannot, can we put this on a future agenda, I know we put it on this one, but with all of what you just wrote, I cannot process everything that you just wrote or read out loud to us and have a, a conversation. I'm happy everybody else can, but I would prefer if we have this conversation at a, at our next meeting. Or, or continue, continue with this conversation because there's a lot of good points in there that you've written that I would like to, you know, honestly think more about and talk.
Sure, absolutely. Trustee Mitchell Morrell?
I just wanted to say very thoughtful, nice words and I'd support them.
Thank you. Trustee Ramondo?
I want to thank you for taking the time and the care to do the job and make sure that we're all being kind and respectful to one another, because it's so important and we want to be a high-functioning goal, uh, high-functioning goal, high-functioning board, which I know we can be and we are. And I, I appreciate your leadership and trustee Story's leadership as well, so thank you Cindy.
Thank you. Anybody else? Uh, trustee Lynch?
Thank you very much, trustee Bishop, I appreciate it. I think, um, this also reminds me of the work we were doing around norms. Um, and I wonder if we could include this with trustee Story's suggestion, you know, potentially we could include that and make some of these part of our norms. I also think there was a discussion about, um, an operational plan before we made goals and it also lends itself to that, so. Anything I can do to help support you and, and I, I take the call that you just offered, that it's up to each of us to, to make these things a reality, I, I'd like to do that. As it relates to the last meeting, you know, in my mind, you know, I, and I appreciate that there's also a cheat sheet that's now laminated, because I had to dig out mine for that meeting. But I do think it's also tricky when you ask for a first and a second before the discussion, because as you said, leadership officers already took a vote. So it's very hard for us then to, even if I had offered that motion and we'd got a first and second, it does feel hard to take another vote on that because a vote has already happened, so I just want to suggest as well that we always try to prioritize discussion before we take the votes because it's, um, in that case specifically, I said, will we have time to discuss this before we vote? It came up in the superintendent's report and it was, everyone agreed, yes, we will, so I just, I really, I don't, I don't want to re-litigate that, I just want to say thank you for addressing it, I don't think the outcome would have changed, I just want to make sure that as a group, we also, again, as you said, um, thoroughly discuss and, and review all of these really important topics, thanks.
I, I just want to say that in, um, Robert's Rules, the, the, the process is you read the, a resolution or, you know, or you bring up a topic to discuss, then you make a motion, somebody makes a motion to vote on it and seconds it, then you have your discussion. And so that's just the way it works, but I feel like now, you know, with our, the advice of our attorneys, that we know, um, I can't find my cheat sheet, I've got too many papers in front of me, but now we know, I didn't, I don't, don't have that cheat sheet, I did not know that existed until, um, until we reached out to the attorneys. So, um, you know, it's really important, uh, you know, that, that we all, I guess that we all have the same information and, um,
I think it's in our handbook, that's where I had it from, maybe, but might be dated.
Might, might be, yeah. But, so, any other comments about what I read or question suggestions? So my final question is, is there any interest in revisiting the EV bus resolution that we voted on last time? Trustee Lynch?
Thank you, I, um, I took from the superintendent's update that actually it, it didn't go away, in fact, we did pursue an extension, so I was, that's, that was the amendment I was offering, so if colleagues understand that that was the intention of the amendment and that did happen, yeah, I've, I've no reason to revisit it, I just want us to make sure that we're, obviously, you know, I mean, none of us are, are interested in turning away eight million dollars that taxpayers would ultimately have to fund if we get to a 2035, uh, reality with, um, high expenses and huge infrastructure costs, so. That's the, I think the shared intention we all have and I was just trying to find a creative way to get there. And also as part of the Legislative Action Committee, I'm very keen to support you, Superintendent and Congressman Ryan's office and getting the answers we need.
Right, great. Anybody else have any desire to revisit that resolution? Great, so fingers crossed that Pat Ryan's office can make some magic for us. Okay, so, and I will send this to our board clerk. You're welcome. Item 11.01 is approve the consent agenda. The board hereby approves items 11.02 through 11.07, may I have a first? Trustee Story, second, trustee Ramondo? Any questions or comments about the consent agenda? Trustee Goodrich, Schedule U? Is everything in order with the Schedule U, trustee Goodrich?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Trustee Lynch?
Yeah, just, uh, to note that I should probably refuse myself from 11.03 as I'm one of the volunteers you're approving.
Okay. Can you vote on the rest of the resolution, I mean, the rest of the consent agenda?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, great, super. So we'll take a vote, trustee Jerome?
Aye.
Trustee Mitchell Morrell?
Aye.
Trustee Goodrich?
Aye.
Trustee Lynch?
Aye.
Trustee Ramondo?
Aye.
Trustee Story?
Aye.
Great, that's unanimous, thank you. And we'll take a five-minute break. Approve all contracts and independent contract retainers. The board hereby approves item number 13.02 through 13.04. May I have a first? Trustee Story, second. Trustee Goodrich? Any questions or comments? Trustee Jerome?
Aye.
Trustee Mitchell Morell?
Aye.
Trustee Goodrich?
Aye.
Trustee Lynch?
Aye.
Trustee Ramondo?
Aye.
Trustee Story?
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous. Thank you. And we have item 14.01, policies. Second reading and adoption of policy 4310, Superintendent of Schools. May I have a motion to adopt policy 4310? Trustee Mitchell Morell, may I have a second? Trustee Story?
Aye.
Trustee Goodrich?
Aye.
Trustee Lynch?
Aye.
That's unanimous. Thank you. Item 14.02, second reading and adoption of policy 4410, professional development opportunities. May I have a motion to adopt policy 4410, professional development opportunities? Trustee Mitchell Morell, second. Trustee Story? Any questions or comments? We'll take a vote. Trustee Jerome?
Aye.
Trustee Mitchell Morell?
Aye.
Trustee Goodrich?
Aye.
Trustee Lynch?
Aye.
Trustee Ramondo?
Aye.
Trustee Story?
Aye.
That's unanimous. Okay, we're at items 15.01 through 15.06, committee reports. Ad-hoc committee has not met, but we have meetings on Monday. Our ad-hoc committee and our ad-hoc subcommittees. Audit committee? No? I don't think you've met since the last.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I think we're meeting again in November, right? Or December, December.
Great. Communications committee? Trustee Jerome, do you want to report?
Yes, sure. We talked about developing a board corner, extending the board corner in the quarterly newsletter to an email list where we would do more frequent updates to the community on what the board was up to and different ways to have members of the community who would like to receive those notifications, be they residents, be they potential students, whoever can sign up and get these communications. Does that accurately sum up our conversation?
I think it does, yeah, yeah. Where I think the goal really of that meeting was to brainstorm ways to get more people engaged and get our information out to more people. Thank you. Facilities committee, was there a meeting? No. Legislative Action Committee, we're meeting when? Next week? Yes. And Policy Committee is hard at work, meeting monthly? Okay. Any old business? Trustee Lynch?
Thank you. Yeah, I had two items, so I'll take the first and then see if others had something else. The first was just a question about the dress code that we had brought up several months ago with the Policy Committee, and there was an action taken by the superintendent's team to offer T-shirts for PE. I was just wondering how that has been going and how it was received, and if there's any feedback from students or staff. I know there's a new athletic director, and you said she was potentially coming to speak with us in a month or so. I just wondered if we could add that update and whether it would be appropriate to ask the student representative as well about feedback when she's, if she's interested in giving that feedback. Be welcome.
Great. Any other old business? Trustee Lynch?
Sorry, I also had an RFI, but I was wondering about bus passes, particularly for elementary ages. I was just curious if there was a rationale for the limitation of bus passes for children to go to extracurricular religion courses, classes, or the like versus now you can only get a bus pass if you're going for childcare or a playdate. And this came up, and I was just curious if there was rationale for that and if it's temporary, given the bus driver shortage, or if we'll go back to bus passes being allowable for young students to be transported to scouts or other lessons or things of that nature.
So we are not, I think I included in the update that those things are not actually school responsibilities. To go to those extracurricular activities, that is not part of the school transportation program. We had done it in the past as a consideration when we had full staff for transportation. We just don't now. So we are not, we are not operationally capable of continuing with those, even if they were something that we were supposed to be involved in.
So it's not temporary, it's permanent?
It's for the foreseeable future.
Okay, thanks.
I don't want to, I don't want to say what's going to happen, you know. We're not, we don't have drivers. We can, you know, our transportation department and our contractor are stretched really thin.
Understood, yeah, thank you. I was just, knowing that we're, that some of those bus issues will change next year with the transition, I just wondered if it was something that would be reconsidered, but it sounds like it won't be.
I'm hoping that the transition will alleviate some of the shortage that we feel, but until we get there.
New business? Is there any new business? Trustee Goodrich?
Yeah, I just wanted to let everybody know I'll be going to the Ulster County School Board meeting in New Paltz on Thursday from 6:00 to 7:00, so I don't know if anybody else is going.
There will be more of us, yes. Any other new business? Trust, not trustee Amanda, Amanda?
Board clerk.
We just realized that the RFI is not on the agenda. And in the past, RFIs was part of this, you know, like the ending of the board meetings. Can we re-add that back onto the agenda?
I am happy to add it if that is what you would like.
I think that would be great. I mean, that way we can ask questions, you know, of the superintendent at a meeting, or we can send an RFI via email. Great, thank you. Are there any requests for information? All right, trustee Story, would you like to make a motion to adjourn? May I have a second? All in favor? Thank you, everyone.